Michael Simone, Pastoral Spring Bridge Community Church. Fairwoman stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Michael, it's great to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Matthew 5. You are the light of the world. A city on a hill cannot be hidden. Neither do people light a lamp and put it under a bowl. Instead, they put it on its stand and it gives light to everyone in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before men that they may see your good deeds and praise your Father in heaven. Dear heavenly Father, we give you all of these moments, all of the words that are spoken and the words that are unspoken, the words that are on everyone's hearts and minds. Father, we pray for the citizens of this city. We pray for all who venture here on vacation that you would keep them safe. We pray for the children of this city. We pray that you would surround them with your amazing grace. Bestow your wisdom upon the men and women here that are here to serve and watch over the city and its citizens. Father, bring your grace to bear upon each and every moment, for we give this time into your holy hands now in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael, thank you again for coming. Really appreciate it, sir. Do you have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. All members are present.
Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have acknowledged this closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
I'll now ask the Vice Mayor to move forward with the consent agenda, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda first for under ordinances, item H. 2, which is for deferral to August the 15th. And Madam Clerk, please note the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
And item 3, which is an ordinance to amend the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Budget, rate federal programs for approval.
Open public hearing for planning.
Under planning for consent, is there a speaker here on Starbucks Coffee Company and Stephen H. Merton?
No.
All right.
No.
He has not checked in. The opposition did not check in with me.
What did she say?
You're good.
Good. All right. Under planning for approval, Starbucks Coffee Company and Stephen H. Merton for special exemption for alternative compliance to commercial building with drive-through at 501 Laskin Road, Beach District. Item 3, application of Mohammed Rabani and Guardian Properties, 2 LLC, conditional use permit, rate vehicle sales at 801 South Lynn Haven Road, Rose Hall District. Item 4, the application of David C. Brosius and Nell Turner, conditional use permit, rate automobile repair garage, motor vehicle sale service bulk storage at 73 South First Colonial Road, Beach District for approval. And Madam Clerk, if you please note, the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Do we need to make a statement that the conditions that were passed out are a part of the record for that particular motion dealing with the?
We do have conditions that were passed out on the application of Mohammed Rabani and Guardian Properties, and they will be a part of the record.
I'll, kind of motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
They're voting yes, no, and abstaining. One second. Oh, wow.
I've never seen that before.
I haven't either.
It's pretty, just no abstention for everybody. We'll just do a roll call.
Your Honor, if you could ask for any nays, then we'd just take the verbal nays and we'll take everybody else's verbal, if there are any nays.
Just as abstaining.
I have that.
There were no nays, correct?
I have that.
Okay, very good. Now, we're gonna have to go to a?
Can everybody at least affirmatively say aye, please?
Aye.
If I raise your hand.
Ayes have it. Okay. We got two more things left to do here. And the first one, I'm gonna ask the Vice Mayor to open the public hearing on the sale of excess property at Princess Anne Road and Winterberry Lane, as I have a potential conflict.
All right. We will now hear the, for the public hearing on the sale of excess property at Princess Anne Road and Winterberry Lane. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Your Honor. I have Anthony, is it Shapiro? Would you say your last name, because I can't read it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Is this the three-minute or three minutes?
Three minutes.
Do you want me to hand the letter? I have a letter from the Civic League as well. I don't know if I can just?
We have that.
We got that already.
Okay, everybody has it. Okay, so this is a property on Princess Anne and Winterberry where I am looking to build my corporate headquarters for Why Not LLC, for Why Not Dine, our restaurant. And then on the first two floors, it will be medical office space, and then I'll have the third floor as my corporate headquarters until further that I need other space. So hopefully, that will be sooner than later, but we're already getting to the point where we've been pretty busy. I think it's a great fit for me as far as our company goes, because we'll be able to have our training facility right there, right next door to where our new restaurant is located. Also in mind, but city, the Civic League, I did two meetings already with the Civic League. First one went really well. I didn't have a problem with it. There was a couple comments on their neighborhood website, webpage. So I decided, they asked me to come back again for another Civic League meeting. There was really no opposition at that meeting, other than some of the people complained. Most people were not there that were complaining. So I went a second time to Civic League meeting, and you have the letter from that meeting. So I thought it went pretty well. So, and had a few comments there just about the neighborhood and being conscious. If you know anything about our company, we're very neighborhood-oriented in supporting schools and little leagues and baseballs and teams out there. So I told them everything there is, any concerns they have, that obviously, I would be willing to look at them for sure, 100%, because I live in a community as well, with a commercial-built property right behind my house, so I do understand it. And things like the dumpster, or locations of that, so obviously, it would be my concern as well. But I appreciate everybody hearing me today and giving me the opportunity to speak with you.
All right. The first item?
I have other speakers, Your Honor.
We do have other speakers?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Williams doesn't hear well, so if you would speak loud.
I have hearing aids in now, yeah. So I can hear pretty well. Thank you, Mayor and Council ladies and gentlemen. I'm not one of the complainers on the internet. I just saw a lot of the writing and a lot of the people that made comments to me. I've lived in that neighborhood. I bought my house 33 years ago, and I've lived in this area since then. I was in the military, brought here from the Navy. I was an aviator and retired in '95. I took a job as an engineer, and I work for the Navy currently. So a lot of people come to me with advice. I research things, and I researched this building, and I was told, pretty much it was a rumor, that the building, all the information was presented to the city council, and they decided to keep that property in the city coffers as agricultural, and it would need to change to business, too. I could not find anything on this building through the internet, or talking to the Planning Commission, or anybody. And I just didn't think there was a transparency with what Mr. Henley had spoken. I don't want to beat a dead horse. Basically, the thing is, though, it doesn't have a transparency, no studies, no, you know, overall, a timeframe for people to opposition, a three-story building by the house, by their community. My biggest concern was for the traffic in dumping out into Winterberry, incoming and outgoing. Because the way the prior speaker had bought the property and put a Why Not Pizza in there, and then, of course, the city council approved them to add, I'm not sure on the statistics, but about like 0.9 acres or something like that for parking, so that he could put his parking spaces in. And then, the additional 1.2 acres of land was purchased, or wants to be purchased, will fulfill that whole lot, which is agricultural. So all the rest of the pieces of property have been rezoned from agricultural to business. And, you know, nobody really could nail down that this thing was actually happening. And Barbara Henley actually emailed eight people, and it was discussed on the Landstown community website. And she's expressed all my concerns, almost to the T, that you just talked about in the other room. And it was basically, my feelings are the exact same as yours. You represent me very well, and I appreciate that. And you spoke basically exactly with the way I feel. Thank you very much.
Jamie Dowdery.
Good evening.
I live on Twinflower Lane, which runs into Winterberry at, you know, at the site that we're talking about, where Why Not Pizza is. I love Why Not Pizza, but I'm thinking about that intersection for two reasons. The increased congestion that would occur at Twinflower, where Twinflower comes out to Winterberry, and then out to Princess Anne. As well as the safety of, there's a very, there's a lot of young families that live in that area, young children that are out playing. I teach part-time at Christopher Farms. I'm a retired teacher, but I'm also teaching part-time, and a lot of those students are mine. You know, I taught the kindergarten children at Christopher Farms, and I see them all right at that intersection. So I'm concerned about that. We've already had a lot of increase in traffic on Princess Anne due to, you know, all the building that's been going on in the area. Yes, that's been in the plan, so it's not really a big surprise. But, you know, when we're looking at a three-story building, everything else is one-story. It's so out of character with everything else that's there, except for the CHKD building across the street. And if you've driven down Princess Anne, you know, that building just kind of looms at you. And then over on the right side, you know, everything is one-story. I think a three-story building going up in there, and it's a neighborhood. It is right in the neighborhood. If you haven't driven by there, I invite you to, as you leave tonight, maybe just take a little trek down there and take a look at that last street before Why Not Pizza. Look in and see what that looks like. There's a lot of waiting time already to get in and out of the intersection. We've lost one entrance into the development back at Holland Road. We lost that one. And bringing access from the parking lot right there at Twinflower is just really gonna cause a lot of congestion, safety problems, and then we're gonna have the increased development across the street with the biomed facilities. So, you know, we're gonna compound all of this. So I have pictures, if anybody wants to see. Would anybody like to see any of the pictures of the area? No? All right, well, thank you for listening.
Tony Villanueva.
Good evening. I'm one of those other ones that was not able to get any information on the internet as far as that land goes. I, on the internet, and calling Public Works and Planning Commission, no information whatsoever. And as a matter of fact, as far as this being declared excess property, thanks to Barbara, that's how I found out Saturday. So, but I'm respectfully asking that this land not be declared excess property. As far as for Landstown residents, it's valuable to us as open space. This is the last piece of land between Dam Neck and Winterberry. And Winterberry's already a narrow road, as already was mentioned. Winterberry also connects to Holland, which is gonna create, which is already a problem, and it's gonna create more of a problem. Let's see. So what I, actually, what I don't want is the growth density that is happening right in that spot is kind of a little more than I thought it would be for, for what I thought was the bio corridor on the other side of Princess Anne. I don't know why that medical portion is going up over there, but it's gonna choke Winterberry, and it's choking us. Okay? So basically, that's it. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
That's all the speakers, Your Honor.
And all the speakers. Ms. Henley?
Well, as I said, I just had received a number of emails, and at first thought it was a rezoning. And then when I found out it wasn't a rezoning, and I told these folks, well, there'll be another process, you'll have an opportunity to come through, and then I found it on the agenda today. It kind of impacted me to the fact that, you know, it's coming almost as a rezoning without the rezoning process, because if we approve this as the transmitter letter describes it, we are, in effect, for example, whereas the buyers plan to utilize the property to build a three-story mixed-use building comprised of approximately 9,800 square feet of first-floor retail space, approximately 9,800 square feet of second-floor office space, and approximately 9,800 square feet of third office space, we're in effect approving this use, which I think is a rezoning, but he would still have to go through the rezoning process, which to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I think we got the cart for the horse here. I think it would really be up to the city council, since we own the property, or the city owns the property, to rezone the property before the sale. It seems awkward to require this new purchaser to go through the rezoning process. I'm not sure, but I am sure of the fact that I'm certainly not prepared to discuss it tonight. And I, at the very least, would ask for a deferral, but would certainly defer to what you folks think.
Mr. Wood has a comment?
And I get where you're coming from, Ms. Henley, on this. I guess, I guess the way I look at it is, is I look at the sheet, the write-up there, and I look at the second to the last bullet, which says, "In the event that the rezoning described above is not approved by the city in its capacity as municipal corporation within 180 days," then this is, this doesn't occur. So I'm curious, I mean, I understand what you're saying, because it's kind of unusual, because there are elements put in here that one would see in a rezoning, talking about landscape buffers, turn lanes, and things like that. And all of that frankly should be in the rezoning part of it. It really shouldn't be part of the sales agreement. From my perspective, I understand what the neighbors are saying, and I get that, but it just seems to me, all of those issues would be addressed by a rezoning. And I don't necessarily see a harm in us moving forward if there's gonna be a rezoning anyway, if all this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stiles, this is just saying, this is essentially an option, I guess?
Well, this authorizes the contract of sale, and the contract of sale has a contingency that if the rezoning doesn't take place, there would be no closing, and it would go away.
Okay. Yes, that's all.
You don't think that the city council taking this action tonight might prejudice someone to think that this is what we wanted and would therefore allow it? I don't know. I think it's, I'm not comfortable with doing it that way, anyway.
Mr. Dar.
Yeah, I think what we have here is, you know, we do have a neighborhood that is adjacent to a major, you know, development of stores and restaurants and, you know, things of that nature. And, you know, sometimes in blended neighborhoods, you know, this is, you know, just a situation. And the point is, though, and I'm just thinking from a perspective where we found a company, Why Not Pizza, coming in. And from what I understand, it was part of their intent to put their headquarters there. You know, Why Not Pizza is a company, that I use it as an example of what companies and entrepreneurship should be. They start mentorship programs for their people and everything. And the other thing is, too, was brought up that, you know, that area is going to develop, you know, with the biomed and stuff, anyway. There are going to be some traffic considerations and things that we're gonna have to take care of. But the point is, though, when I always think about two things. Number one, you know, the folks at Why Not had to go through some hoops to get that building built. And the point is, the message I want to say that, you know, we're open to small business, and we're gonna be business-friendly. And by them putting their headquarters there, I think reflects well on the city of Virginia Beach, considering that they're also in Norfolk and Chesapeake. You know, we want this type of business here. And it's not as though they're dropping them in a vacuum. They're gonna be right next to a whole bunch of establishments of the successful Landstown Commons that's gonna be right there. And, you know, the thing is, would it be a benefit? But the other thing is, too, knowing that, you know, the folks, they're gonna be good neighbors. They're gonna work with the neighborhood. They've already outreach to 100% of, you know, not 100% of the neighborhood. But the point is, though, you know, all things considered, I agree with Mr. Wood. I think we should move forward on this.
Mr. Moss.
This kind of puts people on a rock and a hard spot. We had an earlier issue today that talked about process, and I think there's a process issue here as well, in my opinion. I also am concerned that, obviously, there was a dialogue between people who work on our behalf, which is the city staff, which obviously has had conversations with the applicant here on this question, and that person has spent money and made investments relying upon the good faith, and I'll take it for that, the good faith of our employees. So now, what this has us at a juncture, a spot is, I think all of us feel like, whatever business we're in, we're responsible for the action of our employees. So they, this person acted in good faith. And then we walk over here, and it's like, here's a neighborhood concern, and I know if I was backing up the three-story building, I had a one-story home, that probably would have my interest, too, and your point about business. And I hope when we walk away from this, Mr. St. Andrew, we'll have some kind of lessons learned as to how we cannot find ourselves with, you know, there's no cut the baby in half issue here, because I don't think you can do justice to either party correctly without somebody feeling they've been processed injured, in my opinion. And then, so I am tending to be biased on the part of the Civic League, as support all those people are not, and our employees have made, maybe need some explanation of that. What really was the conversation? Because this is here as a combined city staff with a contingent purchase agreement, I take it. So we've had some kind of legal discussion with this individual. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so I'm, for reasons that have me conflicted, which is the case, I'm really thinking that, you know, that Mr. Wood has a good point. As much as I adhere to the process point Mrs. Henley is making, and normally be on her side, I feel an obligation to make good on the commitment that our employees' representations they've made on our behalf. Maybe by mistake, but they made on our behalf.
Mr. Davenport.
I agree with everybody up here. And Barbara, I certainly understand your stance in this situation. However, concerning the Civic League, there are letters of support from the Civic League, and two public meetings were held where it was opportunity given to voice opposition. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Let's let Ms. Henley have her say first.
You know, good people come before us all the time, and, you know, we don't approve or disapprove based on somebody being a good person. And I'm sure this gentleman is a very good person and runs a good business. And it would have been, be mighty nice if he would just put his corporate headquarters in a one-story building, and, you know, it would be probably acceptable. A three-story building, that's pushing a point. But I just remember when we started with this Landstown Commons project. It was a commercial development going there next to this community. And throughout all of the iterations of the growth of that shopping center, it was understood that they were going to work with the community. And, you know, so that, it has been a give and take for all of them. And, you know, I can understand a Civic League, and I guess I misunderstood the president when we had a conversation last night, because I thought he said he didn't feel comfortable saying the whole community accepted it because it was such a small turnout, but I guess I misunderstood that. But, you know, when you have the adjoining property owners having concerns, I mean, I think I've got to keep faith with what I promised that community when I agreed to support that shopping center. And right now, they're conflicted, and I just really think they deserve at least a couple of weeks to be able to see what the plan is going to be and have some input. Right now, they know nothing about, you know, what the design is going to be, or how it might be. And I've got to think that there's gonna be some prejudice along the way for approving a rezoning. I don't think they're gonna get a real, completely impartial shake on this thing. And I just really, I think it's only fair to these adjoining property owners to at least give them a couple of weeks to understand what's gonna go next to them, and to have an opportunity to maybe make some concerns. Yes, I am told, and I just don't remember everything we do in a closed session, because, you know, we never know until we get in there what we're gonna hear, and we don't get written documentation, but apparently, we were asked back November 1st if we would consider declaring this property excess. And I said, "Well, you've gotta meet with the community," because I knew good and well that we had done this the whole time that that shopping center has been there. But I didn't think we were saying, "Go ahead and do it." I was expecting that it was gonna come back to us before we got to this point in this process. I'm really disappointed in this whole process. I know you're big on process improvement, and I know this gentleman has been on that process improvement committee. So, you know, if we're gonna talk process, we need to respect it. And I've got to respect these property owners who've tried to find out information about it and couldn't. I just, I can't do it tonight.
Mr. Earn.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. You know, it seems to me that, you know, since this is an option that's gonna be contingent on the rezoning, that really, for the applicant, it doesn't give him any advantage one way or another. There's uncertainty in terms of the rezoning, just as there's uncertainty in terms of the property and the property disposition. So, you know, I really don't know that there would be much harm in terms of his ability to develop it, to go ahead and defer this, and so that we would actually vote on them both at the same time. Because it really makes no sense for us to go ahead and sell the property as an option if ultimately, it's not going to be rezoned. So, and maybe that's a question to the applicant, is really, I don't know. I mean, it's speculative. I mean, it's two speculations. One is, you know, is it going to be declared excess property? And then the second speculation is, is it going to be rezoned? To put them both on the same agenda, to me, would seem like an appropriate thing to do. And I don't know, I'm just sitting here thinking aloud, I don't know that that puts the applicant at a disadvantage over and above what he has now, because he's gotta convince the community that the rezoning would be appropriate.
The applicant asked to speak again, if you'd like to do that.
Let's ask the attorney.
Let's ask the attorney. Does it matter? Does it matter if it comes at the same time, or?
Well, you're going to have to go through the, the applicant's going to have to go through the entire rezoning process before the Planning Commission and so forth. That's true.
That's already in place.
That's right. That'll have to take place, but there's nothing that prevents you from doing it that way.
And we've done things like that in the past, where we have, we vote on both of the items that are related to one another at the same meeting, and, I mean, they're interrelated. So, anyway, that's a suggestion.
All right. Mr. Moss, you have another comment?
No, I was taking that same thought process, so John spoke.
But maybe if the applicant can speak to that, I don't know if that would be appropriate, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Would you come up and comment on that, please, sir?
So, a couple of things real quick. Obviously, a three-story building, I'm very conscious of where I'm putting the three-story building as well. So, if you'll look at our blueprint that we have established somewhat, it's all.
We don't have a copy.
Okay. I can give it to you, for sure.
Well, that's too late.
Okay, anyway, it's pushed towards Princess Anne roadside for that fact, so I can have 30-foot trees against the homes, and so it's obviously blocks that view. On the second thing, as far as bringing it to having one vote, obviously, I want to make the process go as quickly as possible. I'm trying to open up another business in Virginia Beach. So, you know, going through the process of opening the restaurant, it was a quite long process, and obviously, you know, I was on process improvements, and my goal as an entrepreneur in the city is to try and help entrepreneurs go through that process a little bit faster, because it does take time. So, if it expedites it, then all the means, but if it doesn't do anything, then.
Well, if I'm right, Mr. Vice Mayor. I mean, really, Tony, you're not going to be able to do anything until you get the rezoning anyway. So, us deferring this action tonight until the night that we decide on, all the stuff we've talked about today, really hasn't been talking about the disposition of the property, has really been talking about things that are related to the site plan and those types of things that we would talk about during the course of rezoning. So, you know, to have them both happen at the same time, I don't know. I can't think of any, and I'm asking you the question. Is there anything that would put you at any of a disadvantage over and above, because it's all going to be contingent on the rezoning, anyway?
Other than any cost that I would have going forward as far as engineers?
But you're going to have that anyway. You're going to have to go through the.
If I have approval to buy the property, at this point, I don't know if I even have the approval to buy the property from the city council.
I see.
So, that is a concern for me.
Do you need that to get your financing?
Probably not.
But you're going to have to have those engineering expenses, anyway, prior to you coming forward with the rezoning.
Rezoning, for sure. I would just like to know if I can buy the property before I go spending money.
Right. There's two decision points, but I would think that if the council looked favorably to a rezoning, that they would also look favorably to declaring the property excess and the sale of it.
It's just something that we're making.
Yeah, I think, from my perspective, I think that's a pretty good assumption. I see them as being interrelated.
I agree with Mr. Earn. I think, you know, you would be better off knowing that you're going to be able to get this property zoned before you get into an actual purchase or try to get into an actual purchase of the property. And I assume you would not buy the property without it being rezoned. So, I think his point is well-taken, and it looks like you've got enough support to do that.
Okay, then, I would make the motion, then, that we defer it and have the excess property question considered at the same time that we consider the rezoning of the property.
And I think, Tony, that would expedite the process, and, you know, not subject you to, you know, extraordinary delays like you went through.
Oh, I'm all about that.
I second the motion.
The city will have to be an applicant on that rezoning, just as long as we all understand that. So, we will be an applicant for the rezoning along with the contract, well, it will be a contract purchaser. We will be the only applicant on the rezoning.
And that's the way it should be.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody was clear on that point.
Okay. We've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Yes, John?
I just want, there was one person here that talked about retaining the property excess as open space, but I think people should, listening and walking away, is if we act favorably, and we think the, if we think the rezoning makes sense, because this, we are really making the same kind of good faith commitment our own staff made, is to declare the property excess and sell it, if we rezone.
If we rezone it, yes.
That's right. I just want to make sure that people walk away knowing that. I just want to be on the record where I stand, at least.
All right. Yes, Mr. Dab.
Vice Mayor, the only thing that I have a little bit of pause here is, is that he's going to be going through a rezoning without a contract on the property. That's unheard of, as far as I'm concerned.
The city's going to do the rezoning.
So, the city's going to pay?
We have to.
Okay.
Well, the city, in all likelihood, the city and the entity will have to join together because he's got to have the plan for you to consider.
Well, they do that all the time. The owner and the potential user are joint applicants. Happens all the time.
It does. It's usually a contract purchaser, but it doesn't have to be.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, the vote's open.
Could we have a show of hands again?
Aye. I'm abstaining.
Aye.
I have your abstention. Okay, everybody else is in favor. Thank you.
Okay.
Be ten to zero.
I'll see if I can do a little bit better here. Scarlett Dawn Winley and Derek Williams, conditional use permit. You have speakers.
No, we do not have speakers. They didn't show. Thank goodness. I'm not up to another one.
Okay.
I will move a poll.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the, everyone say aye.
Aye.
Everyone ayes.
Seven to zero.
We'll go to appointments, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Let's see if I can find them here. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Development Authority Lisa Mercy Murphy, to the Green Ribbon Committee Laura Haber, to the Historic Preservation Commission Madeline Penatry, and Sean Demant, to the Minority Business Council Kelvin Arthur, Harshad Barat, Sheila Johnson, did you say Michael Lancaster?
Yes.
Michael Lancaster, Olga Torres, Sabrina Wooten, Brian Haskin, and Ed Hopper.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
I have a comment I just want to make. I voted for the economic development because our current policy doesn't require people to file an economic development disclosure statement before they're appointed, but I'm going to be bringing forth a resolution that they do, because I think we need to know what people's potential conflict of interest might be with development in the city before they're appointed.
You do realize someone did not submit one, and we got a letter from the Commonwealth's attorney basically saying it didn't absolutely have to be done.
I know. I just bring forth to change our policy.
Got it.
Policy's important.
Okay. And is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business?